Thirty-one, we have an A and R for one sixty-four Lake Road from Gary Galanik. Six thirty-five, we'll discuss a request to lay out and accept the cul-de-sac by Hillside Drive as a public way. At six fifty, we'll have an informal discussion with RLS Complete Sturbridge regarding a proposed cold storage facility proposed for ninety Charlton Road. Then we'll follow that with a town plan update and all the new business. Uh, pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth twenty twenty order suspending certain conditions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen. And the governor's March fifteenth twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Sturbridge Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrative-pages/tow-access-meeting. For this meeting, whether you wish to listen, uh, and or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast, on cable television on channel one nine one, or dial in the meeting at seven seven four three zero four one four five five. Enter one four two eight pound for the meeting number and one two three four five for the access code. This phone number is only available for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to, uh, to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio, indoor, video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive record of the meetings of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. So has anyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of the December twenty-second meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions, comments, changes? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes as submitted. I'll move Jeff. Uh, Jeff, yes, and Russell second then? Okay, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Mike?
Abstain, I was not at the meeting.
Okay. And I vote yes. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Uh, the next item then is an A and R request for one sixty-four Lake Road. Jean, do you want to go over that?
Um, yes, I thought Mr. Galanik was getting on the meeting, but I don't see him, so I'll go over the plan with you. So the purpose of this A and R is to create parcel A, which is noted not a building lot, and Mr. Galanik plans to convey this to a neighbor. And his remaining land, the lot one R, does meet the requirement, so I would recommend the board endorse the plan as submitted.
Okay, great, that seems pretty straightforward. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments on it?
I just wonder why you mentioned that he will, he will tell his neighbor?
Um, that was based on conversations I have with Mr. Galanik, and because sometimes, sometimes people will wonder why are they creating a parcel that's not a building lot?
That's what he's gonna say. And half the answer is, right?
I, I'm sorry, Charlie broke up.
Okay, yeah, I mean, he's gonna sell it to his neighbor, so he'll have use of the property.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We have a motion to authorize the board to sign the, um, A and R. Russell, yes? Sue? Okay, great. Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes. Very good. Okay. Very good, well, thank you. And you'll commit to sign that, I guess, tomorrow or something like that? Great. Okay. Next item is to discuss a, a request to lay out and accept the cul-de-sac by Hillside Drive. Uh, Jean, do you want to go over that?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do. So we have, uh, Butch Jackson, our DPW director, and, um, Mr. McDevitt, are you on line?
Yes, I am, Jean, thanks.
Okay, perfect. So, Mr. McDevitt purchased the lot down at the end of Hillside Drive, I believe, in two thousand seven. And when he purchased the, the lot at the end, he also realized that he was a proud owner of a cul-de-sac that had not been accepted by the town. So what happened is, in nineteen sixty-five, Hillside Drive was laid out and accepted as a public way. However, the cul-de-sac was not completed, it was completed sometime after that. So they, the land was paved, there's sufficient room to turn around, and there are four lots on the end of the cul-de-sac. So recently, Mr. McDevitt has been planning to sell a couple of the lots down there to people who would like to build a home, and it came to all of our attentions that this was, this last piece of the road was never accepted as a public way. So we had a meeting with myself and Mr. Jackson and determined that, um, Butch, Mr. Jackson, should go out and inspect the cul-de-sac, and he's here this evening to give his report on that. And ultimately, we're, we will both recommend acceptance of this cul-de-sac, and I'll let Mr. Jackson provide his report to the board.
Yes, uh, not much to report. That cul-de-sac, I was actually surprised to find out it wasn't part of the town system. It's been there, I would think, over forty years. And, uh, so I, we checked it out, it's a sufficient distance, the bus drivers can get around, the plow trucks can get around, there's a minimal drainage on it, so, uh, we feel it's, it's fine as it is.
Very good, very, thank you very much, Butch. Any other questions or comments on this, from anyone?
Butch, I can remember when I was driving, Charlie?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I can remember when I was up there when they were surveying it, that, uh, there was some property markers, like right in the middle, it's definitely property lines, I can't tell by the description we have in front of me, in front of me, but property lines encompassed the whole.
If you're asking me, I, I.
Yeah, Butch, you're wondering about some markers that were in the middle of the cul-de-sac?
Uh, I didn't see any markers when I was up there, it must've come in, come in afterwards.
This was back when I was probably three or four years ago, when I saw the moment that it was vague.
Yeah.
Our, our basket is the full circle is part of the layout, right? The full circle, the turnaround is part of the layout.
As far as I know, yes.
Yes, and then, um, Russell, the, the plan shows the paved area of the cul-de-sac, and then a good swath around that, that would actually be, become part of the town layout as well. Okay, thank you.
Very good, and I guess, uh, Jean has given us the appropriate motion would be to recommend to the, that the board of selectmen, a layout cul-de-sac at the end of Hillside Drive, and also to support the acceptance of the roadways at the town meeting. Do I have a motion to that extent? I'll move Jeff. Jeff, thank you, a second?
I'll second.
Chris? Okay, great, Chris, thank you. Very good, okay, any other questions? If not, Sue, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Us?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Great, and I vote yes. Very good. So Jean will take care of that and get that onto the board of selectmen?
Yes, I know.
Great. Okay. Uh, next item is an informal discussion with RLS Complete Sturbridge regarding a proposed cold storage facility proposed for ninety Charlton Road. Jean, do you want to lead us into that?
Yes.
Yes. So staff is working with, uh, Brian Hedges, of Brian Hedge, excuse me, of RLS Complete, and he's here this evening with his team, Logan Stoller and Todd Garrett. And they are proposing, I think I had updated you on this a while back, they're proposing to build a cold storage facility at ninety Charlton Road. And this is the property that is between Hobbs Brook and the entrance to the Technology Park. It's our last priority development site in town, and they have been, they've met with staff, they've met with the TIF committee to talk about a potential TIF, and they are finalizing their design right now. So as we were progressing through the staff review, it became pretty apparent that the building would require much less clearing of the natural vegetation, would likely be far less visible from Route twenty if the design was actually reversed. So normally, we like to see the loading docks and the parking in the rear of the building, and, you know, the building and the green space up front. However, as you know, we've just, um, approved a cold storage facility fairly recently, they're a bit taller than the average building. So we're looking at about fifty-seven feet to the parapet, with the office being about thirty feet high. And we had discussed, uh, you know, how this might look and how the board might feel about this, and at first I was a little skeptical, I asked the, um, applicant's team to go back and do some visual simulations and give us an idea of what it would actually look at, look like. So when they came back with their, the work that they had done, it became pretty apparent to me that this is probably the right way to go. However, I wanted them to come in and meet informally with the board to see what your thoughts are before they finalize the plan, since it will be quite costly to finalize all the engineering plans. So with that, I will share my screen with whomever is presenting, Todd, would that be you, or? And, and I'll ask, um, Brian first if you would like to say something to the board while we're giving Todd the rights to share his screen.
Sure. Uh, just take a couple of minutes to kind of introduce you to, uh, cold chain, uh, what we talked about, say, cold chain, and then, uh, myself and RLS Complete. So, um, first, you know, cold storage, I mean, fundamentally, the cold storage industry is really, um, just facilitating the movement of temperature-sensitive perishable frozen food products from storage to retail, uh, for end users. So it includes receipt inspection, proper handling and storage, preparation of orders, shipment of those orders, and some includes the transportation of food product to its final destination. Um, you know, it's, it's a little bit different industry, uh, the barriers to entry are, are really high construction costs, um, and expertise. And really, the expertise revolves around, as you can imagine, the, uh, complexity of cold storage, where, particularly around food because of the, uh, highly regulated environment, but in many cases, the refrigerant that's used is anhydrous ammonia, uh, and/or Freon, and, you know, and some, when it comes with its own sort of, uh, own set of, um, very highly regulated standards. Uh, so we have to work very closely with OSHA and EPA on those pieces. So one of the unique characteristics we're looking at in this design is not using anhydrous ammonia, we're using a much more environmentally friendly refrigerant than either, uh, Freon or two. That's a little bit different. Um, you know, given, given the factors of cost, typical, where a foot dry warehouse is probably going to cost around seven million dollars to build. This particular facility without racking it, you know, racking it all, would be pretty close to eighteen million dollars, so it's a, a pretty significant investment. Um, you, you can imagine the current, uh, state inventory of cold storage warehouses in the U.S. averages about thirty-four years old, so the, the industry, the space is actually getting older and there's a lot more demand for our services today. Uh, USDA estimates that there's about three point six bil, cubic feet of cold storage space today, and that's projected to grow by about a hundred million square feet, uh, annually, cubic feet annually, sorry about that. So e- even in New England, we are projected that our space will grow by almost ninety percent, uh, annually through twenty twenty-five, so there's a, there's a growing and burgeoning need for our services. Uh, much of that change is driven by consumer, you know, choosing healthier eating habits, uh, less refined sugar, fresher and healthier foods, you know, sustainable plant-based alternatives, and, and many, many frozen food is, are more nutrient-dense than fresh food. I mean, think about where our produce and vegetables are usually coming from, in, in particular time of year, most of them are, are imported, uh, many come from Florida and California, so the second you, uh, don't harvest produce or vegetables, they're already in a state of decay. And in, the industry's come a long way, so, uh, in terms of using individual quick freezing technologies and things like that today, i- in many cases, frozen food is far more nutrient-dense than fresh food. So that's part of the driving factor, but, and you clearly, I'm sure you all know from the pandemic, uh, in, in terms of, uh, consumer response, food service sector really kind of died out, which was, you know, hospitals, hotels, uh, uh, schools and university, healthcare facilities, so there really was a, of significant reduction in the, in on the food service side. Conversely, the grocery side, the retail side just went, went crazy, right? Um, the end of twenty twenty, with, with sales for frozen food up nineteen percent over twenty nineteen, and frozen, I mean, refrigerated and perishable products were up fifteen percent, so that's pretty significant. The other side of that is you're seeing a lot, and I'm sure, you know, most, everybody's familiar with Instacart and the online ordering processes that are happening, so, um, those services in, in what we call click-to-collect, so online grocery purchases, place your order, and then go to Walmart and pick from the curbside, or, uh, stop and shop and pick it up curbside, those, uh, sales factors were up a hundred seventy-five percent over twenty nineteen, so we, you know, tho- those are all contributing. In the early, uh, months of the pandemic, the click-to-collect sales were up three hundred percent. I know that, you know, in my family, we utilized those services, uh, tremendously until we had a better sense of what was happening with the pandemic. So those, we don't really see those changing. I, I think in terms of, uh, consumer behavior, we're going to see those continue in that, in, in the same trend, and, you know, part of that trend also is getting the food distribution centers closer to the consumer. So we're trying to locate facilities much closer to the population base so that we can reduce that turnaround time and get the food as fresh as possible to the retail outlet. So that's a little bit about our industry, you know, who is RLS Complete? Um, we're, we're a partner on regional operator, we're a complete cold logistics, we're a partner and regional operator of RLS Partner, which is an affiliate of RLS Logistics. Um, I, prior to taking, leaving Pioneer, I was with Pioneer Cold for fifteen years as the, uh, CEO in Springfield, Mass. Uh, and Pioneer is the largest, uh, single-site public refrigerated warehouse in the United States at five hundred thousand square feet, so a very large location. Um, we had customers coming from upstate Maine, uh, Machias, Maine, with blueberries, we had customers coming from Central Mass with frozen bakery, we had customers coming from Burlington, Vermont with, uh, you know, chocolate chip inserts for chocolate chip cookie dough ice cream. So, I mean, there's very few providers in our space, and what does that mean in terms of, uh, access? That means that there's really high transportation costs, which affect the consumers, it also affects the ability of those, our, our customers to be able to store product actively. So our strategy now, um, in, in, I left Pioneer, as I said, I found a complete cold, and we partnered with RLS. RLS Logistics is a third-generation, family-owned cold storage company based out of New Jersey. Uh, I know, uh, Russ and Leo, who are the owners of that business, they're brothers, they've been in the business for twenty years, they do not run the business like, well, they run it like a family business in terms of how they treat their employees, but not how they manage the business. So, uh, you know, it's a great fit, and that allows us the access to grow ourselves, uh, oh, excuse me, nationally. We're trying to find other executives that want to partner with us, or family businesses want to partner with us across the country, and that will allow us to provide a, a national, uh, scale opportunity for those customers that do not want to do business with consultants like AmeriCold or Lineage Logistics, which are our largest players in our space, they are publicly owned or private equity, not privately owned, so they're not family-owned like we are, and their, their focus on service is somewhat inconsistent. So, um, we're, we think we're offering a pretty compelling, uh, alternative to customers in the marketplace, and, and Sturbridge is, you know, great location geographically, uh, very, you know, uh, community-based organization, or, or municipality, those are some of the things that we really like about, uh, Sturbridge. So, we're, you know, we're, we're happy and excited to be coming to Sturbridge, uh, and, and we're, we're really looking forward to working with the community and being a longstanding community member there.
Great, well, thank you very much. So now, we're going to discuss the, uh, the layout?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, and so I'm going to have Todd kind of control the screen behind us here, um, and what you're, what you're looking at is, uh, the original, this is our, our revised rendering, one of the revised renderings of the site. The site is ninety Charlton Road, which, um, I'm sure you're all pretty familiar with and, and realize that's, I think that's the last preferred development site, uh, in Sturbridge. And, um, initially, when we looked at the site, you know, there's a pretty significant slope east to west on that site, and, uh, and speaking with Jean, you know, we understood that we wanted to keep the loading docks flipped away from Route twenty, and, uh, obviously, that was, uh, you know, to, to help, uh, the appearance and, and keep things looking very, very nice from the roadway. However, as we kind of got into the, the work here, um, it became apparent that if we were able to push the building back farther from Route twenty and flip the building around, we would have to do a lot less, uh, sightlike and, and not remove as much of that vegetation from the roadway. It would also, uh, lend the building to be actually less visible from the roadway, and , and really, uh, as you'll see in other renderings that we have, uh, from the road, that the building is very, it's, it's much more attractive when it's pushed back and flipped with the loading box toward the space. So not only can we leave that, that, most of that vegetation on the roadway, uh, pretty much all of it, but we can still, uh, access the site and, and have full operational capabilities. So, uh, because of that slope, one of the things that I would, I would point to is, you know, out on the roadway, um, I think Jean mentioned the building is designed to be fifty-seven feet at parapet. Uh-huh. And you've got about seven hundred, I think, right along the roadway around Route twenty, the elevation is about seven hundred seven, seven hundred seventeen feet above sea level, and you go back to that, uh, western corner, which is in the far, uh, lower left-hand side of the screen right now, that, that elevation is about six hundred seventy, six seventy-five, uh, feet. So having a building that high, uh, moved back is actually going to help us disguise it with the trees that are out along Route twenty and all that vegetation, as opposed to having the building, you know, thirty feet off of Route twenty at fifty-seven feet high and just towering above the trees that are out there. So we thought that, you know, pushing this back was really going to help us, uh, kind of disguise the building, if you will, from Route twenty as you're driving back and forth along the roadway. In addition, um, one of the other benefits to doing that is there, there would be, there's a lot of fill that would have to come off the site if we were to leave it in the original design, and that could be extremely disruptive to that traffic on Route twenty, all those, you know, the truckloads would all have to take a right here, uh, before they can go, you know, either east or west on Route twenty. So, um, we just thought it was kind of a win-win in being able to turn the building around, uh, it helps maintain, you know, the, uh, intention of keeping the loading docks away, it helps, helps visit, uh, a more attract, uh, if you will, visually, uh, from roadway in, in the direction, and, and would be far less disruptive during construction.
Hey, very good.
You can see, uh, Todd's flipping through a number of the photos, and I, and I think you've all got this, uh, packet. Uh, really, when we do flip this, uh, building with the docks facing the street and the additional plantings that we, we have planned, and leaving the vegetation in place, really the only part of the building that you actually see from the roadway is the office space.
And this, this is a rendering we had done prior to, just a preliminary, just basically showing the building, but, but yeah, we, we, there's a lot of trees, you know, there, this, this site is covered with trees right now, so in addition to, you know, this whole area up front here where we're going to maintain the existing, we're also looking at planting some, some shrubs and hemlocks, and then the trees that are coming up the entryway, really should be, really should do a, a job of, of, of screening the building from Charlton Road.
Right, if you could go back to the, um, the, the slide there that shows, um, the trees that you, uh, are presenting as we look at the presentation here. Um, I mean, it looks like there's an awful lot of, um, new trees or different landscaping in the front, in that area that you're, you know, talking about retaining the veg, vegetation there. Um, has the landscape plan been really thought out and planned, how much you're really going to add to some of these flowering trees and so forth?
Uh, we have, we, uh, have Summit Engineering, Andy Baum from Summit Engineering is working on the civil engineering set, and, um, this was a preliminary layout, but, but for the site planning, uh, package he's hoping to present here later in the month, or to submit later in the month, he's, um, he's going to have thought all that out in depth.
So that goes back to a couple of slides, I think you had a slide that, you know, showed, um, these, uh, trees right in front of where the turned-around building is, um, the proposed
Uh, renderings?
Rendering, yeah. And that, it's not showing a lot more colorful trees as well.
Right.
There you go. I'm just wondering how much of that is going to really be there? I mean, it looks like there's really extensive, you know, landscaping done, even in the greenway, you're saying you're not going to have to cut, you know, much down, and I, I just wanted a little more thought about what this rendering really means, what we're really going to see that.
Well, and we're going to incorporate, obviously, there's a, there's a berm at the road, about a five-foot berm at the road, but, um, we're going to try our best to, to get existing trees laid out in the close fashion that it could, based on, you know, this scenario of what we have, but, um, we're pretty confident that we have five, five of trees shown properly. Um, it may not be the exact tree, but, um, as Brian was out there getting some snapping photos from the road, I mean, we've got a, you know, those trees are probably forty-five, fifty-foot tall.
And, and for the additional vegetation that we will be adding in our landscape for the development, in that submittal that we plan on submitting in the, in, at the end of the month for the formal, um, our landscape and site plan will have all the specific species of trees, um, that are, uh, going to be, uh, presented for the project, and the exact, um, how, of each species of tree, and where those species will each be located along the site, um, calling all that in great detail, making sure it matches the surrounding area and, uh, and making sure it all, uh, makes sense.
Okay, good, good, thank you. Okay, ready for questions then from the rest of the board?
Sure.
Okay, Sue, do you have any comments or questions?
No, it's a great idea, I just have one question. The area by the street, and this might have been what Charlie was going towards, is that going to be rough like it is now? Is that going to be rough like it is now? Or is it going to be finely manicured like this rendering shows? You know? Just a thought, just something.
Yeah, the site itself, outside of the existing trees, the trees, all the vegetation that will stay there, but the ground area around it itself will be properly maintained to accommodate the rest of the development and the surrounding area as well. So we won't all the, the shrub randomly up against Charlton will not, it will not be left messy per se. It will match the development.
I'm sure. Okay, thank you. And the other thing, I know there was a concern with turning left on 20. Has there been any discussion about your trucks being able to turn left on 20? On Charlton Road? As far as traffic and speed and?
I think preliminarily, when we had that initial discussion, we talked about having to turn right. So, you know, we did do a traffic study as part of this and that's available if you want to look at it. But yeah, it's going to be bad traffic, just taking those pictures right across Route 20. I felt like it was a little bit, a little bit taking my life in my hands. So yeah, left-hand turns unless there's some additional traffic work that gets done, that's mostly what's not going to happen.
Right, okay. I just wanted you to, I wanted to make sure you were aware that that could be a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Okay, thank you. So Chris, Chris, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Hey, Russ?
Well, I got a couple, Charlie. Something on what Sue had brought up, was there any thought given to putting a right turn lane coming westbound? Because I know that the car carrier trucks come out of 49, they had a pretty good clip. And is there, I know you get the telephone calls there, is there enough room to put a right turn lane into the facility coming west?
That we would have to come on with our civil engineer. We haven't, when we, we had the traffic study, as Brian said, we had the traffic study completed. It was all really pretty positive as far as the additional traffic, the traffic that was going to be generated from this project. It wasn't really going to be that significant, so we probably have to look into how many trucks per day.
Yeah, I think, Todd, just to jump on that, Russ, I think the traffic study, you know, we indicated there would only be like between 30 and 40 tractor trailers per day. And in terms of employee count, you know, when we're maxed out, we're probably going to have about 20 employees. Now, this location will be the headquarters for RLS complete. So as we continue to add locations and facilities, we'll add headcount that will be out of Sturbridge. There's not really enough traffic for us to get, you know, start to go back to the state to talk about turning lanes. Or that's what was indicated.
Maybe something just to think about and, you know, I'm just giving you a heads up, there's a lot of traffic that comes out of that Route 49 headed towards Fiskdale. And once these car carriers get going, when the Ford and General Motors get geared up again, there's a lot of car carriers that come flying out of that Route 49 and they don't yield or anything, they just keep running coming. So maybe something you want to consider, that's all, you know, just a suggestion. The other thing, I didn't see anywhere on the plan a generator and I noticed you got the fire suppression tank and a pump house. So my first question is, the pump house, is that going to have a backup power source? And how about the existing facility, or not the existing, but the proposed facility? Will that have a backup generation source and where would that be located?
The pump house will definitely have backup, that's required by code. I believe we have to have a diesel pump backup. And generator for the facility will probably be back in this area. We've got a little maintenance room, but there's going to be an electrical room and probably the riser room.
Yeah, for the facility itself, another option as well, through the industry and the buildings across the country, with how the buildings are constructed, if power were to be lost, the buildings could hold their temperatures with all the doors closed for some time. So what we see quite often across the country, because a generator for the entire facility is a hefty investment, is we will have kind of plug and play per se, but cam locks where we can back a generator up to the building and plug it right in and plug and play right away where a service contract will be in place. That service contract is a high priority right behind hospitals, things along those lines. The facility is for food products, so it's high on the list. So that is what we see generally across the country in a large majority of these buildings.
Just to add to that, Russ, to answer your question, we have contracts with disaster recovery services around. Their agility is one of the larger ones in the U.S. Because the generator to run the refrigeration system will be a flatbed, you know, truck-mounted generator, like a one-megawatt plant. So that's to Logan's point, that's where we just plug the pigtails in. So, you know, the building, if we were to lose power, we would close everything down and just hold it tight for 48 to 72 hours. And then at some point, you would have to be working with the utility provider to kind of gauge how long we'd be out of power. And if it got to the 24-hour mark, then I'd probably place that call. Because once you place the call, they've got 24 hours to get that flatbed up and get it hooked up. So I can tell you that in, gosh, I've been doing this for almost 30 years, I don't want to sit on the line, I've been doing it. But, you know, we've lost power one time and never, I've never had to call for an outside generator. So we've been able to kind of make it through, not to say we'll never have.
There's a safe house, right? And just that point of information, will you be applying for a TIP agreement with the town?
Already have.
There you go, thank you. And I just, I think it's a great project and it's a lifelong resident, I welcome you to the town and everything works out. And I appreciate all of your effort, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Russ. Jeff, do you have any comments or questions?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, Mike?
Nothing more to add, I'd be very interested to see that traffic study when we get to that point.
Great, okay, and I have no other comments. So the whole point of this discussion today was to make sure we had no issues with the idea of flipping the building around, having the, you know, the truck and so forth in the front and move the building back. So it sounds to me like everyone is happy with this and willing to entertain the movement forward in this direction, is that correct? Okay, great. Gene, you don't need to mosey or anything on that, do you? Just an indication that we agree that this orientation is...
Right, I, I, right, I just kind of wanted to get information. And the process with this will be, if we get the application at the end of the month, I'll be sourcing quotes for peer reviews and will be stormwater management system peer reviewed as well as the traffic. I do have copies of the preliminary traffic study that was done and that will be included with your packet when we provide that to all of you. And hopefully, we'll be able to hold the public hearing the end of February, I'm hoping, depending on when the filing comes in.
Okay.
Worst case, beginning of March.
All right.
All right.
Okay, thank you all so much. Thank you very much for coming in and good luck with the project, it's great.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the town planners update.
All right, so our next meeting is January 26th. We have the definitive subdivision plan for Fiskdale Realty Trust that has been filed. This was, this plan was approved in 2007 by the Planning Board of Preliminary Subdivision Plan. And they never went forward with anything. Recently, you met with Mr. Justin and John Stelmo regarding a 55 and over that they wish to build up on one of the lots on this subdivision. So this roadway will provide the access so that they can get to that property. And I've closed the quotes for peer reviews and the project is currently under review by Par Corporation during reviewing the stormwater management system, the overall subdivision roadway construction and layout, as well as the traffic analysis. And I'm working with Mr. Bridges to try to get information on the sewer connections and what might need to be done for that. So we may or may not be able to conclude the hearing on the 26th, but we'll at least open the hearing. You'll be able to hear the presentation, hear from the peer reviewer and review all the staff reports. And then we may need to continue that until February. And then on February 9th, we have a public hearing for 420 Main Street, that is the parking lot to serve the barn, the Table 3 properties. This will be going on the land that was recently rezoned. And so that, excuse me, is in the process of having a stormwater management plan reviewed. I'm not reviewing traffic study, nor did I require a traffic study because this will be an old pro parking lot for, to serve the businesses better there and to help accommodate their wedding business. And also on the same evening, we'll hold the public hearing for the zoning amendments for the Village Gateway District to allow fast food and to remove the square footage minimum on fast casual and then also the changes on the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And that, and then when this project, the cold storage, gets filed, we'll have that either the 23rd or perhaps even the first meeting in March. And then there, I just have a couple of other things that came in after I provided the report. But the solar facility on Hereon Road, the Blue Wave Project that's down next to Hogs Brook, we have the poach construction monitoring report. And, you know, you'll recall that at the last inspection, I had asked them to replace, there was a lot of dead and dying vegetation. That's been replaced and it did survive through the spring and the fall. And I'm ready to close this project out. And then the final last thing that I have is there's a tattoo shop called Hidden Use Tattoo that will be locating at 484 Main Street, which is the white building just on the corner of Arnold and Route 20. There's like a hair salon, a massage therapist. So he'll be going in Unit 2 and this is a one-person tattoo salon. And that is all I have.
Very good, well, thank you very much, Gene. Okay, next we have old or new business, Sue, do you have any old or new business?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I just have two comments, I guess, or questions. Gene, with regards to all the various traffic studies we've done, I know, just in my tenure on the Planning Board, I think this will be the third, the third business that's going to be going in that area up there. And individually, when they do a traffic study, it seems as though they're all within the parameters and they're all, you know, meeting the guidelines we asked. I'm curious, has there been any study that takes the cumulative of all these businesses? As they're all, you know, because, I mean, like the gentleman said, I think he said there's going to be 20-something vehicles a day or something. You know, you add that up with all the other businesses that are there, is there, are there guidelines we should have for everything before we get to a point?
So they're, so yeah, but actually it's through MASTBOT. So all of these projects are funding on the state highway, so MASTBOT actually has to approve the access permit and they get to review the traffic study as well. So we're doing our local review, but then everything is going to MASTBOT and they have the ultimate say. So you'll recall with the last facility, the blast storage facility, Jeff Bridges reached out to MASTBOT. We were trying to get them to do some roadway improvements at that time. They declined, saying that it wasn't a significant enough traffic generator. This study has gone to MASTBOT preliminary meetings with them and are saying this is not a significant enough traffic generator and it's close enough to the light that's at the center at Hogs Brook to create gaps. So I think, you know, with the traffic coming out on the state highway, we're in a way at MASTBOT's mercy. I know Mr. Bridges has been trying pretty strongly advocating for the town, letting them know that we believe that some traffic transportation improvements are in order on that corridor. And you'll recall, I talked about the Noble Energy Project, that's looking at the Route 20, the former Route 20, New England Truck Stop area. And they've actually met with MASTBOT and they are proposing to follow a traffic light there that would accommodate them and perhaps maybe the bank or the office building across the street. So they've been in discussions with them. Their response from MASTBOT was, oh, this is a great proposal, but we are also looking at other intersections in the corridor and will need to decide where we will have a traffic light located. So there are a lot of projects that are being proposed in Charlton that will have a much more significant traffic impact. And I have logged on to the MEPA review meetings and advocated for the town that, you know, we do believe the cumulative effect warrants some traffic improvements on that quarter, but so far, not so much. So the long answer is yes, we do look at, and, but on state highway, it's really up to MASTBOT to make those decisions.
Yeah, and I was really just curious, because like I said, individually, they all seem to be fine. But, you know, again, this is, I think, the third one that we've looked at up there and it adds up. The other question I had was with regards to signage. And selfishly, I live off of New Boston, but I'm curious, with regards to the Panera there, it seems as though they've added a lot of new little signs that just continue to say we're open or, you know, open for business or things of that nature. I'm just curious, is that, is that, how much time do they get for something like that? Because, you know, certainly they have their normal big constructed sign when they first open. And now it seems like there's a lot of little ones that sort of say the same thing.
Yeah, so there are, and we have received complaints about those. And I know Nelson Burlingame, our zoning enforcement officer, has been working with Panera and I am going to mention it to him again, I'll let him know that it came up this evening. But during, when the pandemic began, I think there was a little bit of leniency so people would know which businesses were open. And so he was maybe a little more forgiving. And now he's really trying to step up enforcement and get people to take those extra signs down. So I'll mention it to him again tomorrow. I noticed a similar thing, I went out for a psychic visit at Pilot Travel this morning and I noticed the new Apple Green had nine flags out in the green strip by the roadway. So I let him know about those today. So I think, yeah, the signs are multiplying and it's pretty apparent these businesses are open. So, you know, he'll need to step up a little bit on those, which I know he will do.
Perfect, that's all I had, Charlie.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Russ?
Gene, give us back the subdivision for our next meeting. Are they looking for the town to accept that road?
Yes, so the goal would be that it would be built to town standard so that eventually can be accepted as a public way.
And so the reason I bring that up for discussion is, I know from personal experiences, not to pick on any developer or anything, but Acorn Lane has a severe ice problem. Meadowview Lane has a severe ice problem. So I don't know if it's a review being done by a peer review that's not putting in the proper drainage for the roadways. And then it's up to our highway department to fix the problem. And they've already been to Acorn Lane several times and they've put in additional drainage and it's still a severe ice problem right as you turn into the roadway. Meadowview Lane, when you're coming down the hill, that last rainstorm we had, it was all ice from the Highland Ave intersection all the way down the aisle road. The water was just coming up through the pavement. So my concern is down there... down there, if it doesn't down there, well, it's going to be going on to State Highway one thirty-one and then, you know, it's going to be an additional problem. So I don't know what we can do to make sure that there's the proper drainage. I mean, there's just two instances that I know of where the drainage is insufficient for the, for the roadway to handle it. So, hold on.
So I'm not sure what happened in terms of peer review for Meadowview Lane and actually Acorn Lane. I came just when we were finishing up that one. But I do know with the, I think the stormwater standards have been updated since those, both of those developments have been put in. So we have our local regulations and byline as well as the Massachusetts State standards. So I'm, you know, hopeful that they're, when they're reviewing these, we're fine, you know, they're confirming that it meets the standards and that it should be fine. But I, I think that's a good point. We'll keep an eye on that as we go through the review and, you know, I'll make sure when John Chevlin's reviewing the stormwater that, you know, he's really taking kind of that slow roadway into consideration as well.
And the only other thing I have was on the side, another thing with the side, I know, I couldn't quite find it. And I know we have something about when a business closes, that a sign be taken down or take, take it out of commission or whatever. And, and I know that the Bank of America is closed now. And I noticed cars pulling into that parking lot to go to the bank, people getting out of the cars to go and it, and the signs still pop. I'm not sure exactly what day it closed, but there's a sign that, and it's the biggest sign on that, by the, you know, people are supposed to, that don't know, I don't know if it'll help and talk. Just for a point of information. Maybe we do have a bylaw when they're supposed to come down, right?
All right, I think Nelson as well. Nelson needs to be a little more proactive on some of this stuff. Very good. Thank you, Russ. Jeff?
Nothing, brother.
Great, Mike?
Uh, no, nothing.
Okay. And I have no old or new business. So with that, I guess we'll have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved, I'm moved.
Chris, thank you, Jeff. Second. Sue?
Yes. Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.